Meeting of the Board of Education, October 21st. We're proceeding by the lead to the Board of Education this evening. Recognition of senior candidates and a public forum is now 7:04 PM. Kristen?
I would like to introduce Ryan McGlaugh, who will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Ryan is a sixth grade boy in Mrs. Sheeran's class every day at school. Ryan enjoys building Legos, swimming, boating, and YouTube videos. Last summer, he received his voter's license. When he grows up, he would like to either be a YouTuber or a fireman for the FBI. Ryan is kind and always willing to lend an open hand to his peers and teachers. Ryan, would you please come up here to the Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have public comments on any agenda items. If anybody does have a public comment. We're going to hold on that and we're going to turn this over now for our presentations to the Board of Education.
So my muscle memory is totally out of whack because it's been many months since we've been here. And I cannot tell you how amazing it feels to look out in an audience and see the community here, see our teachers here and our administrators here. It's really wonderful to see everyone. So thank you so much for coming out. Tonight is one of our annual traditions and it's a true pleasure to speak on behalf of our Board of Education and celebrate Board of Education as we do each year as part of New York State School Board Recognition Week, which this year is celebrated during the week of October 19th through the 23rd. So it works out perfectly in our board schedule. So this is a time to promote awareness and understanding of the important work performed by school board members. East Rockaway School District is joining all public school districts across the state to celebrate School Board Recognition Week to honor local board members for their commitment to East Rockaway and its children. This year's theme, once again, is "School Boards Need So Students Can Achieve." Dr. Cuomo has proclaimed that this week be observed by more than 700 school boards and public school districts throughout the New York State. Our public education system is designed to meet the needs of all children in our communities and empower them to become competent, productive contributors to society in an ever-changing world. Local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for ensuring that our children receive the best high-quality education possible by working closely with parents, education professionals, and community members to create the educational vision we hold for our students. On behalf of the faculty and the staff of the East Rockaway School District, I would like to express our sincere appreciation to the Board of Education trustees for the significant time and unwavering dedication they give to their positions. I'm honored to be working with a fine and dedicated group of individuals. And this is a new board. I think they may still be waiting for their checks to come in the mail. I'm not sure if anybody told our trustees that there is no pay for this. So please join me tonight in acknowledging the commitment and the contributions of our Board of Education trustees, Mr. Donovan Vulpis, Mrs. Kristen O'Hagan, Mr. Pete McNally, Mr. Daniel Di Matteo, and Mr. Joseph Kilgus. I'd also like to thank their spouses, Kathy Vulpis, Tim O'Hagan, Karen McNally, Teresa Di Matteo, and Jessica Kilgus and their families for supporting the work of our trustees. They spend many hours reading material, preparing for board meetings, and being present at meetings and functions. And some of this has been at home through Zoom, but they do spend a great deal of time. So I don't know if everyone in the community, and I don't even think some of our new trustees, knew how demanding the job really was. But as I said, school board trustees are volunteers and they receive no pay or any type of compensation for their service. I know that our trustees take their responsibility and public trust very seriously, dedicating an enormous number of hours to their work both in and outside of board meetings. They attend school functions, they prepare for meetings, they read financial reports, agendas, proposals, and they make a host of difficult and challenging decisions. And those are just a few of the regular activities that board members participate in through their service. School boards serve as fiscal stewards of the district, one of the most important jobs that they have. And they do this to ensure accountability to the tax chambers. They establish key goals for their district, they form partnerships with others in the community, and they study a variety of educational issues. They prepare budgets and track performance in order to provide the kind of accountability that this community expects. And they sometimes must make some very difficult decisions, which they do and they don't do that easily. They deal with a lot of thought. This is quite a list of responsibilities and our board certainly does this job with aplomb, commitment, and hard work. So once again, words are truly inadequate, but thank you for your service and your dedication to our community. And those are just a few words because the real fun stuff comes now. So I'd like to invite Rayne Avenue School Principal, Dr. Aisha McGarther, to come up and take over. This year, it is Rayne's responsibility and the Rayne Avenue PTA to provide the recognition for our Board of Education. Dr. McGarther?
Good evening. The students and staff of Rayne Avenue School would like to extend our heartfelt gratitude to the tireless efforts of the members of our Board of Education. You have set a course for excellence for our most precious gift, our students, by committing the resources and expertise to ensure that connection, opportunity, innovation, and achievement is a reality for all students. The time that you commit to enacting policies to support these endeavors is no easy task and it is a sacrifice away from your families. This does not go unnoticed and we greatly appreciate your dedication and support. In thinking of the best way to celebrate you, we turn to our students. We, of course, had to share exactly what the role of a board member entails and how your work impacts their lives as students. Here is what they had to say, and I will warn you, you will learn what is important to our students.
Thank you, Mr. McGarther, for the dedication. We appreciate all that you do. Thank you for helping us learn from his lack of class. Thank you. Love you.
Dear Board of Education, thank you for all that you do.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for all your kindness.
Thank you for your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Hi, I'm Adam in fourth grade at Rayne Avenue School. I'm in Mrs. Byers' class. Thank you for everything you do. Happy Board of Education. Appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Ellen and I go to Rayne Avenue School. And I am in this class and I just wanted to thank you. Thank you for making good decisions for Rayne Avenue School. And happy Board of Education week and I hope you all have a great day. Bye.
Hello, my name is Brian. I am in fourth grade. My class is the third and eighth grade elementary events class. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you for making good decisions for Rayne Avenue. Bye.
Thank you for everything for everything what you guys do. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Juliana. I'm in fourth grade at Rayne Avenue. My teacher is Mrs. Booth Fay and Mrs. Byers' class. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you for all the hard work. And thank you for making all the good decisions that you made for Rayne Avenue. Bye. Happy Board of Education week.
I'm Ryan in fourth grade at Rayne Avenue School. Thank you for everything you do.
We take this time for taking the Board of Education, for giving us all of our schools a chance. And giving us band and orchestra and many different things. Thank you to the Board of Education. Bye. Thank you for all you do for us.
Dear Board of Education, my name is Susan. I'm a fifth grader at Rayne Avenue School. Thank you for keeping school going with all the initiatives that you help provide for us. You are the great provider and great educator. We appreciate everything you do for us. Thank you. Bye.
Hi, my name is Juliana and I'd like to thank the Board of Education for what they've been providing us throughout the year with. For example, band, orchestra, and other clubs. I'd also like to thank them for keeping our environment safe and healthy. Thank you guys for all your hard work. Bye.
Thank you, Brian.
Dear Board of Education, I just want to thank the Board of Education for taking their time out of their day and giving us all the supplies and everything else available. Also, thank you for making the great decisions. Even though we might not have this this year, thank you for the pastures and the amazing field trips and clubs, orchestra band, jazz club, student council, etc. Thank you so much for everything. Thank you. I really appreciate what you're doing. It must be especially hard this year due to the virus. Thank you so much.
Without the Board of Education, there would be no school. Without school, there would be no knowledge. So me and my bird are here to say thank you.
Dear Board of Education, I just wanted to thank you for creating a safe learning environment for our students. The things you do and the resources you provide us are great. I love that you provide us resources with sports, technology, educational material, clubs, music programs, and an orchestra. The list goes on and on what you do for us. It is very thoughtful for you to do this. I am very thankful. Bye.
Thank you for all you have done for us. You have nothing but band, orchestra, and more.
This is just breaking news. Some kids in sixth grade Missions class would like to thank the Board of Education for everything that they have done to help this kid achieve his goals in the sixth grade year. Thank you.
Thanks for giving our kids the opportunity and our students the opportunity to make music in our school district, both in chorus and in music class.
I think that final tribute sums it up. We are still standing, we're still much stronger through all of the adversity that we faced with COVID because of you. Thank you so much. And now we'd like to give you small tokens of our appreciation.
Do you have my name on the stage? And I have certificates, just like my kids do. Put it on your refrigerator, show your kids.
Hey, is that the head? Okay, just hold up your certificates. All right, one, two, three. Okay, one more.
As I smile, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much to our Board of Education. Let's have another round of applause, please. I'd also like to thank the Rayne Avenue PTA for all of their support throughout the year, especially tonight for helping to coordinate. And those lovely treats that are on the board table are also from our PTA. So thank you so much. Unfortunately, we can't share refreshments tonight because of our situation. But thank you, Dr. McGarther. And please, on behalf of myself and the Board of Education, please thank all of our students for the wonderful presentation and our music teacher for the beautiful, beautiful, a very, very appropriate song, Mrs. Salloway. Thank you to her as well. Unfortunately, we can't have our students performing together because they need to be 12 feet apart. And we have to have the camera way, way out to capture all of that. So we're pleased we will be able to enjoy a musical presentation. So thank you again. Moving right along, tonight is a little bit different time of year. Usually, we recognize our teachers, individuals who have been recommended for tenure in the spring. But sometimes hiring schedules and leads shift those dates along the way. And so we have the pleasure tonight of recognizing two of our excellent teachers. We'll be presenting them to the Board of Education for tenure. And here to speak on behalf of those teachers are Dr. McGarther, who's going to speak on behalf of Caroline Drumme, and then Mr. Shaefer, who's going to speak on behalf of Mr. Thomas Cannell. These are two excellent teachers. Tenure is a very, very important step in a teacher's life. They have worked very, very hard and I know these two individuals personally and I know they're going to continue to work hard and provide the best education for our students. So we grant them, I wish them a very long and continued successful career in East Rockaway. Dr. McGarther?
Mrs. Caroline Drumme joined the East Rockaway community in 2011 and has been an invaluable member of the Rayne Avenue family for the past four years. Her journey here began as a kindergarten teaching assistant at Center Avenue. This was such a pivotal experience for her that she returned to school to gain her early childhood extension and was then fortunate to assume a kindergarten position for four years in Alpers, Queens. However, her love for the East Rockaway community led to her leaving Alpers to join the Rayne Avenue kindergarten team. Mrs. Drumme truly embodies a spirit of collegiality as she seizes opportunities to learn and reflect with her colleagues to improve her practice for our youngest learners. This has been reflected in her willingness to host colleagues in her classroom to learn more from her Approach to Teaching Writers Workshop and professional learning that she is providing during faculty. Her commitment to her professional growth sparks the passion that drives her towards finding the resources and best practices to stimulate high engagement for all of her students. This has also led to her dedication to improve teaching and learning beyond her classroom. To this end, Mrs. Drumme has assumed numerous leadership roles in both the district and building level as she has shared her expertise as a co-presenter during the board curriculum presentation on Writers Workshop, served on the district committee to develop a balanced literacy framework, served on the district reading committee for the selection of a new reading program, and the Rayne Avenue Connection Action Team. Creating a classroom environment that is nurturing, inclusive, and ripe for high levels of student learning is at the core of who Mrs. Drumme is as a teacher. She promotes a positive classroom environment for all students that truly ignites their excitement for learning. Kindergarten teachers shape the foundation for learning for our youngest students. This notion is near and dear to Mrs. Drumme's heart as she reflected on why she enjoys teaching kindergarten. She shared, "I am able to take this journey with them from tiny babies into young readers and writers. The growth that occurs over the course of a year is incredible. Every year, I am amazed by it and it never gets old." Her commitment to her students extends beyond the confines of Rayne Avenue School into the homes of her students as she establishes a warmer core with all parents. Forming a strong partnership with families is essential in helping Mrs. Drumme to alleviate the fears that parents have about sending their precious little ones to elementary school for the first time. Her commitment to her students and families makes Mrs. Drumme a true gem. During our swift transition to remote learning in the spring, Mrs. Drumme and her husband James were also expecting the first child. Her dedication never wavers as she maintains rigor, consistency, and normalcy for her students, up until she welcomed baby Owen a few weeks early, the day before Mother's Day. She often now shares her new family experiences with her students to build a strong connection with them. It is my honor to recommend Mrs. Caroline Drumme for tenure to Mrs. Ruiz and the Board of Education. Congratulations, Caroline.
We'll have a socially distanced picture.
I was going to say, we've seen Rita and Aaron.
Yeah, it's his birthday, yeah.
It's his birthday. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I'm trying, Mr. Rose.
Don't worry about it. Don't worry.
Okay, I'm trying. Good evening. It's great to be here for a live board meeting at the St. Louis Day. It is my pleasure to be here tonight to speak on top on behalf of Tom Cannell. Tom joined the English Department at East Rockaway Junior Senior High School in September of 2015. He is intelligent, reflective, and passionate about his craft. Any conversation with Mr. Cannell shows a key knowledge and understanding of English curriculum, literacy, vocabulary, and pedagogical practices. What struck me most the first time that I observed Mr. Cannell was how thoughtful his planning was. Every element of his lesson plan was purposeful and directly connected to the objectives of the lesson and would help make his students be successful. His use of learning intentions and success criteria ensured that his students were clear about what they were expected to learn during the period. During the lesson in which he conducted a Socratic seminar, he acted solely as a facilitator, barely present throughout the lesson. The students totally took over, responding directly to each other throughout the period. Student responses were insightful, showed high levels of preparedness, and consistently referenced textual evidence. He incorporated opportunities for student reflection and self-assessment, which are very important skills for our students to engage in. During the post-observation, Mr. Cannell was prepared with ways that he would improve the subsequent lessons that required students to use similar skills. His ideas were spot-on and quite frankly, made my job very easy. Furthermore, Mr. Cannell's classroom environment is both inviting and calming. He consistently goes above and beyond to welcome his students into the classroom, whether in person or remote, and his even tone makes students feel comfortable. Last year, he even went as far as introducing various lighting elements into his room to create a mood. The net result is an environment where students are willing to take risks in sharing their opinions, often around difficult topics for discussion. Students also feel very comfortable talking to Mr. Cannell after class about what was discussed during the period, about something else they find academically interesting, and about life in general. Tom makes an investment in all of his students and demonstrates his care by taking the time to build relationships with them. Outside of the classroom, Mr. Cannell has been yearbook co-advisor, mock trial co-advisor, and, with a little bit of nudging, stepped up this year to take on the challenge of freshman advisor. In his role as co-advisor for mock trial last year, he helped our team to a victory in the first round of 2020 tournament in February. Unfortunately, the pandemic cut the season short, but it was our team's first victory in several years. The students of East Rockaway Junior Senior High School are extremely lucky to have Mr. Cannell as part of the future of our school. He is a true asset to our community and I look forward to his continued instructional and professional growth. It is for these reasons and many more that I recommend him with our Is this my question right? There we go. Okay, good evening. It's me, Diana. On behalf of the East Rockaway Administratives Association, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Education for their ongoing support of our students, our families, and our staff. Schools are at the heart of any community, but maybe more so here in East Rockaway than elsewhere. That has never been more evident than during our current situation, and without a Board of Education that is so vested in the well-being of all constituents and is trusting of the judgment of its administrators, we could not have had such a successful reopening of schools. So once again, thank you for all that you do and will continue to do. Your leadership is inspiring, and we certainly appreciate your commitment to ensuring that our students achieve. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shaefer. We have another one by Gail Byer, and she wishes to speak on behalf of the ERTA on Board of Education Appreciation. Yeah?
Good evening. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Education for the work they do as unpaid volunteers for the school community on behalf of the East Rockaway Teachers Association. I know that this is a job that takes time away from their families as we work to make logical, reasonable decisions regarding the direction of our school district. In my role as president of the ERTA, I attend many of the Board of Education meetings. I've had a hard time keeping up with the schedule of meetings this year because you keep adding them on in order to get all the things done and have to get done. Your continued support of our membership is well-heeled, and we appreciate your continued partnership as we work together to help lift the children of the East Rockaway Union Free School District towards their full potential even during a global pandemic. Thank you so very much for your efforts.
Okay, moving on now. Agenda item number four, approval of minutes, September 15, 2020, meeting of the Board of Education. Are there any questions from the board? May I have a motion to approve agenda item number four, A. So moved by Ms. O'Hagan, second. Second by Ms. McNally, all in favor. Opposed, stayed, so moved. Announcement of monthly reports and correspondence. Would like to announce received monthly financial reports, August 2020, and correspondence. On the correspondence, I just wanted to, there were two that came from the Board of Education account. One was actually from the ERTA, and I want to thank you also for attending here tonight. For this one, I want to read through public. Dear Board of Education trustees, as the month of September closes, I wanted to take a moment to reflect upon the opening of schools in my role as president of East Rockaway Teachers Association. I want to thank you for all the work and time you have put in. I know you added extra meetings to your calendar to accommodate all challenging policies and guidelines, and because of that, we have set up in many ways for success. In addition, this month brought our first positive COVID case. You acted swiftly and safely. I appreciate, as are the members of the ERTA, the decision to put safely first and close East Rockaway Junior Senior High School for three days. Each situation is different, and you may decide to handle things in another way should we have additional positive cases. However, it certainly gave me great comfort to know our members and the students were safe while the building was clean. It created an example of how you can move between remote and in-person learning during this unprecedented time of education and continue on. I know you are aware that the staff is working tirelessly to meet the needs of our learners across environments. We appreciate your continued support as we continue to navigate these uncharted waters, respectfully, Gail Byer, President of the ERTA. Thank you very much for that. And, Gail, you're right, we couldn't track the number of meetings we were having from the beginning either, but as each and every one of us and a new member said, "He wished, he told us it wasn't going to be that many meetings," but it turned out to be, and you know what, it was there for a reason. But not only the board, but don't forget, before it gets to us, it goes to so many, so many avenues, you know, from the central administration to the building administrators, from the teachers' union, all the way through, and it works when we work together. So thank you for that. Moving on. Our recommendation of superintendent schools, I'll turn this over to our superintendent, this is Ruiz.
Thank you, Mr. Wopas. Tonight, I would be recommending that the Board of Education accept with regret the resignation of Gus Baco for the purpose of retirement from his science teacher position effective January 6, 2021. Also recommending that the Board accept the following resignations: Christina Bruso, substitute monitor, effective October 21, 2020; Gus Baco, badminton coach, effective October 2, 2020; Marie Throctree, junior varsity cheerleading coach, effective October 1, 2020; and Julian Castillo, permanent substitute teacher, effective September 18, 2020.
I'd like to make a motion, first of all, are there any questions from the board? Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, make the motion to approve agenda item number six, A and B. So moved by Mr. Kilgus, second. Second by Mr. DiMatteo, all in favor. Opposed, stayed, so moved.
So recommending, as you've heard this evening, it's a true pleasure to recommend that Board of Education grant tenure to Caroline Drumme, elementary teacher, effective October 6, 2020, on continued satisfactory evaluation, and Rain Avenue kindergarten teacher.
Are there any questions from the board? I'd like to make motion to approve agenda item six, C. So moved by Mr. McNally, second. Second by Ms. Kilgus, all in favor. Opposed, stayed, so moved.
So recommending, and it is with great pleasure, that I recommend that the Board grant tenure to Mr. Thomas Canelli, English teacher, effective October 30, 2020, on continued satisfactory evaluation.
Are there any questions from the board? May I have a motion to approve agenda item number six, D. So moved by Ms. O'Hagan, second. Second by Ms. Kilgus, all in favor. Opposed, stayed, so moved.
Also recommending that the Board approve a change to the leave of absence requested by Heather Figliosi to be effective September 25, 2020, through December 11, 2020. Also recommending that the Board approve a request of Donna Smith for a leave of absence for personal medical reasons, effective October 9, 2020, through November 25, 2020. Also recommending that the Board approve a request of Frank Catina for a leave of absence for personal medical reasons, effective October 9, 2020, through November 2, 2020. Recommending that the Board approve the request of Alexandra Pienfrettonio for an FMLA leave of absence from her probationary science teacher position, effective November 30, 2020, through February 12, 2021. Also recommending that the Board approve the request of Brianna Ostrander for an FMLA leave of absence from her probationary special education teacher position, effective November 14, 2020, through February 5, 2021. Also recommending the Board approve the request of Marissa Diamond for a 12-week FMLA leave of absence from her elementary teacher position, effective November 30, 2020, through February 19, 2021. Recommending that the Board approve the appointment of Celeste Mark-Guilleau to the position of short-term substitute elementary teacher, effective November 30, 2020, through February 19, 2021, at the per diem salary established by East Rockaway Board of Education on the noncontractual salary schedule for the 2021 school year. Recommending the East Rockaway High School Club Advisor assignments for the 2021 school year as will be set forth in the schedule of Club Advisor assignments and the stipend salaries established by the East Rockaway Teachers Association contract for the 2021 school year. And recommending that the Board approve the Winter Sports Coaching Schedule dated October 21, 2020. Further recommending that the Board approve the appointment of Christopher Russo to the position of short-term substitute music teacher, effective September 24, 2020, through December 4, 2020, at the per diem salary established by East Rockaway Board of Education on the noncontractual salary schedule for the 2021 school year. Recommending that the Board approve the appointment of Lauren Radburn to the position of short-term substitute elementary teacher, effective October 5, 2020, through December 11, 2020. And recommending that the Board approve the appointment of Christina Bruso to the position of school monitor part-time, effective October 22, 2020, at the tolerated Step 1 annual salary established by East Rockaway Union Free School District Monitor and Secretary Unit and United Public Service Employees Union agreement for 2021 school year. Also recommending that the Board rescind the appointment of Stefano Salupo, substitute cleaner, approved at the September 15, 2020 Board of Education meeting, and that the Board approve the following temporary assignments at the salary approved by East Rockaway Board of Education on the noncontractual salary schedule for substitute workers, and that is Mary Ann McDonald, substitute monitor, Kathleen Clement, substitute monitor, Patricia Pignotara, substitute nurse, Alexis Freyberg, per diem substitute teacher, and Justin McGowan, home tutor.
Any questions on agenda items six, E through R? May I have a motion to approve agenda items six, E through R? So moved by Ms. O'Hagan, second. By Mr. McNally, all in favor. Stayed, opposed, abstained, so moved. Other items. Agenda item number seven, A. Approve the following resolution, whereas East Rockaway Union Free School District is required to adopt a citizen participation plan as a recipient of federal funds in connection with the Living with the Bay Project administered through the government's Office of Storm Recovery in order to meet the citizen participation requirements of Section 508 of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended, and the program policies of the New York State Community Development Block grant disaster recovery. And, whereas the East Rockaway Union Free School District is committed through adoption of the plan to the full involvement of all residents of the community in the composition, implementation, and assessment of its CDVGDR program, now therefore being resolved that the Board of Education of the East Rockaway Union Free School District hereby approves and adopts the citizen participation plan. Any questions on agenda item seven, A? May I have a motion to approve agenda item seven, A? So moved by Mr. DiMatteo, second. By Mr. Kilgus, all in favor. Opposed, abstained, so moved. B. Approve the two-year district plan of services for special education for the East Rockaway School District, which outlines the district's comprehensive strategy to address the needs of students and disabilities throughout the district. C. Approve the following resolutions, be resolved that the Board of Education accepts a financial audit and corrective action plan prepared by the W. Smith LLP for the year ended June 30 of 2020. D. Approve the agreement between East Rockaway UFSD and the Heartland School Solutions for the 2020-21 school year and authorize the Assistant Superintendent Finance and Operations to execute the agreement on behalf of the East Rockaway Board of Education. And E. Approve the following resolution, resolved by the Board of Education of East Rockaway UFSD, that retention and disposition scheduled for New York local government records issued pursuant to Article 57A of the Arts and Cultural Affairs Law, and containing legal minimum retention periods for local government records is hereby adopted by use by all offices in legally disposing of valueless records listed therein. For the more resolved in accordance with Article 57A, only those records will be disposed of that are described in retention disposition schedule of New York local government records after they have met the minimum retention periods described therein. Only those records will be disposed of that do not have sufficient administrative, fiscal, legal, or historical value to merit retention beyond legal minimum periods. Are there any questions? That's B through E. May I have a motion to approve agenda item B through E? So moved by Ms. McNally, second. Second by Mr. DiMatteo, all in favor. Opposed, abstained, so moved. You notice the hesitation because I'm trying to figure out what's behind the mask. Sometimes it's a challenge. All my glasses are foggy up at the same time. Agenda item number F. Letter R. Approve the lease agreement between East Rockaway UFSD and Pittany Bogues for a term of five years and authorize the Assistant Superintendent Finance and Operations to execute the agreement on behalf of the East Rockaway Board of Education. Approve the ambulet transportation provider agreement between East Rockaway and Lee Wade Transportation, DBA, Choice Medical Transport, dated September 23, 2020, and authorize the Assistant Superintendent Finance and Operations to execute the resulting contract on behalf of the East Rockaway Board of Education. H. Approve the admission of following students to attend the East Rockaway Public Schools on Special Education Summer 2020 Program and authorize the President of the Board of Education to execute the tuition agreements between the Board of Education of East Rockaway UFSD and the Board of Education of Ascending School District, which is the Valley Street Central School District. I. Approve the admission of following students to attend the East Rockaway Public Schools for the 2020-21 school year and authorize the President of the Board of Education to execute the tuition agreements between the Board of Education of East Rockaway and the Board of Education of Ascending School District, in this case, the Valley Street Central High School District. J. Approve the members of the professional development team pursuant to policy 9700, staff development
of students and disabilities throughout the district. C. Approve the following resolutions, be resolved that the Board of Education accepts a financial audit and corrective action plan prepared by the WCCL LP for the year ended June 30th, 2020. D. Approve the agreement between East Rockaway UFSD and the Heartland School Solutions for the 2020-21 school year, and authorize the Assistant Superintendent Finance and Operations to execute the agreement on behalf of the East Rockaway Board of Education. And E. Approve the following resolution, resolved by the Board of Education of East Rockaway UFSD, that retention and disposition scheduled for New York local government records issued pursuant to Article 57A of the Arts and Cultural Affairs Law, and containing legal minimum retention periods for local government records is hereby adopted by use by all offices in legally disposing of valueless records listed therein. For the more resolved in accordance with Article 57A, only those records will be disposed of that are described in retention disposition schedule of New York local government records after they have met the minimum retention periods described therein. Only those records will be disposed of that do not have sufficient administrative, fiscal, legal, or historical value to merit retention beyond legal minimum periods. Are there any questions? That's B through E. May have a motion to approve agenda items B through E. So moved by Ms. McNally, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. DiMatteo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so moved. You notice the hesitation because I'm trying to figure out what's behind the mask. Sometimes it challenges, all my glasses are fogging up at the same time. Agenda item number number F. Letter R. Approve the lease agreement between East Rockaway UFSD and Pittany Bogues for a term of five years, and authorize the Assistant Superintendent Finance and Operations to execute the agreement on behalf of the East Rockaway Board of Education. Approve the ambulet transportation provider agreement between East Rockaway and Lee Wade Transportation, DBA, Choice Medical Transport, dated September 23rd, 2020, and authorize the Assistant Superintendent Finance and Operations to execute the resulting contract on behalf of the East Rockaway Board of Education. H. Approve the admission of following students to attend the East Rockaway Public Schools on Special Education Summer 2020 Program, and authorize the President of the Board of Education to execute the tuition agreements between the Board of Education of East Rockaway UFSD and the Board of Education of Ascending School District, which is the Valley Street Central School District. I. Approve the admission of following students to attend the East Rockaway Public Schools for the 2020-21 school year, and authorize the President of the Board of Education to execute the tuition agreements between the Board of Education of East Rockaway and the Board of Education of Ascending School District, in this case, the Valley Street Central High School District. J. Approve the amendments of the Professional Development Act pursuant to policy 9700, Staff Development. Those are the amendments that are listed on the agenda item under J. K. Approve the 2021 Professional Development Plan for Continued Support and Professional Learning of Students in East Rockaway School District faculty and staff. L. Declare obsolete for the purpose of disposal and or recycling the items listed on the tech book removal, all dated September 25th, 2020. M. Accept the following donations from the Wendy's Company, 100 practice meals for the East Rockaway Junior Senior High School staff valued at $700, and two from the Manquezi family, lunch for the East Rockaway Junior Senior High School staff valued at $1,200, in appreciation of all the staff does, especially during this time, October 19th, the Manquezi family provide lunch for all high school staff on October 21st, that was today. What about to do for gift?
Wonderful.
Wonderful.
Eating us well.
They are a bit. Any questions aboard? May have motion to approve?
So moved.
Letters of C, this time with my friend. F. F through N.
So moved.
So move by Mr. DiMatteo, second.
Second.
By Mr. Gilges, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so moved. Through with CSC and CPSC recommendations, I receive those during the week. Any questions aboard? May have motion to approve? Number eight on the CSC and CPSC recommendations. So move by Ms. O'Hagan.
Second.
Second by Ms. McNally, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so moved. Budget transfers. Item nine A, under recommendation of Superintendent, the Board of Education approves the following budget transfer, transaction number 21, they have 0007, has a reclass of budget in compliance with the asset coding. Any questions on board? May have motion to approve? Agenda item nine A.
So moved.
So move by Mr. Gilges, second. By Ms. O'Hagan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so moved. Policy matters. A, policy subcommittee report, I'll turn to Ms. O'Hagan.
There are no policies up for adoption this evening. We have a policy subcommittee meeting scheduled for tomorrow, October 22nd through 30 p.m. We will continue to review the following policies. 4531, field trip and excursions. 8121, one dash R, opioid overdose prevention regulation. 9150, noncontractualization new. And 6705, federal funds purchasing.
Thank you, Ms. O'Hagan. In reports, agenda item number 11, Mrs. Ruiz, your 10th report.
Thank you, Mr. Volbes. Wanted to provide an update on our instructional plan. This is the seventh week of school, and we're really very pleased overall with how things are going in our schools. I think a lot of us did not think we would still be here, you know, with the threat of COVID, and we're just thrilled that not just our district, but the whole New York area is doing so well. Aside from the one case of COVID-19 that was identified in September, you know, we have been stable. We were really very proud of how seamlessly our teachers and administrators at the high school transitioned to remote learning during those three days. We have not had any cases, aside from, I guess, what I'm calling fringe cases, so someone who works here, who knows someone with someone, and then maybe they need to quarantine, but they do not directly affect our school community at this time, so we have not had to close. I'm sure you're seeing on the news, Newsday, as well as Channel 12 News Report, the school districts pretty much on a daily basis that have a case here and there, and then they too have to close their doors for a day, and sometimes up to two weeks, but that really depends, and people may wonder why that is the case, it really depends on the contact that that person had within the school community. So being a staff member that may have had contact with a lot of people, Bosie's just closed a building for two weeks, and so that's been quite unusual, usually it's just been for a day or two. It's usually been a day to clean, maybe two days if they need to complete the contact tracing. Contact tracing, we had a really very good experience with the Department of Health when we had our case. There is Dr. Tavara Buckman, who was actually on a conference call this morning from the Department of Health. She is a liaison that's been assigned to work with superintendents in school districts when we have an identified case, and she is an absolutely brilliant woman and very, very helpful. We felt like we were in really good hands and very comfortable with her, her very knowledgeable and represented the Department of Health well, we learned a lot. And they do, we do do contact tracing together, and so we did learn what that means, what that looks like, how to keep ourselves safe in our schools, make sure that everybody is wearing masks, that we are six feet apart, because that will reduce the number of close contacts that we have in the event that there is another identified case. And so we realize the importance of that now because, you know, we were fortunate that we did not have to close for a very long period of time, and there were not a lot of people that were identified as close contacts. So again, we're all learning, but it's good to have, know that we have a strong partner in the Department of Health to work with us. Once again, I would just like to acknowledge and thank our faculty, our administrators, and our staff, who are working diligently and creatively to support our students every day and provide as much of a normal school environment as possible during these challenges. Tomorrow, we're going to be pushing out a survey to faculty to gauge how our instructional models are going from their perspective, and next week, we will be sending out a survey to families to gather their perceptions as well. I'd just like to turn it over to Ms. Heck for a moment, who's going to speak a little bit more about our instructional model.
Good evening. It was nice to get a little bit of a glimpse into some of the classrooms in that video that we saw earlier, and the smiling faces of the students behind those tents and all that is happening in classrooms. As Mrs. Ruiz said, our schools have been having up to Monday before seven weeks, and in many ways, we are settling into this very different school year, while there are many other aspects to this school year that continue to be extremely challenging. As you know, we have students who attend school onsite daily. We have many students who attend school in a hybrid model, both onsite and remote, remote, excuse me, remote learning. And we will send a number of students who participate in school through a fully remote learning model. So planning for and delivering instruction in these different models is a challenge that we were never supposed to have to do in the K through 12 setting, but we are doing it. Our students have been wonderful with the new safety measures, and they consistently wear masks, they maintain social distancing, and they follow the guidelines that are in place for the safety of all members of our school community. The faculty has taken on this challenging year with determination to ensure that learning is moving forward and with a lot of creativity, to work around the requirements that prevent us from providing instruction as we did prior to the pandemic. This creativity is seen each day as remote learners are greeted at home, on screen by teachers in the classroom, and lessons are planned to have students engage and collaborate, although they're not working together physically like they would have done in the past. None of this is easy. Planning for this instruction takes time and creative thought. Delivering these instructions takes energy, takes patience with oneself and others, and with technology, which can have its own ideas of when it wants to work, and all of this is a work in progress. Nobody expects it to look great all day, every day, but we appreciate all the efforts that go into it, and we're grateful for the East Rockaway School community, for the families who are doing this with us, and for the faculty and staff who are determined to make this happen. We were never supposed to be teaching like this, but we are doing it, and we're also looking forward to our next steps and what may be possible, hopefully in the not-too-distant future. I will be reconvening our instruction committee, that's met, committee met all summer, many times, to look at the guidelines and the guidance from the Health Department and the CDC and the New York State Education Department. We will be reconvening to review our current systems, the progress that we've made, where we are, and we'll also be reviewing some feedback from families' group surveys that will be distributed, so we can assess what our possible next steps are, when they become available in the future. So we continue to evaluate how we are serving our students, we continue to develop our system for onsite, hybrid, and remote learning, and we continue to make this a very challenging, very unique school year, experience of positive and positive for our student each and everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Additionally, we had a, we did send out a survey, a request, we had parents, as you may be aware, who requested a full remote option, and we had asked parents to designate whether they would keep their children on full remote either through the first heartbeat period, which was designated as November 10th, or through the first semester. And so we, for those families who indicated they wanted to stay out for the first semester, we asked if they were interested in having their children return. We did get those responses. I think we have about, I don't have the exact number, I'm sorry, but we have of those that were just slated to stay out for the first semester, I think it's about 30% are coming back, and so we are 30 to 40%, so we are accommodating our classrooms with some additional dividers, barriers to make sure that our classrooms are safe and we still have the protections that we need, but it's not a large group of students at this time who are interested in coming back into the schools. And we will keep you updated as we move forward. The, something that's important for the community to know about is the mandatory COVID-19 testing in yellow zones. New York State has implemented a cluster action initiative, you may have heard about this on the news, it's not specific to state districts, but it's this new concept of three zones, the red, the orange, and the yellow zone to address COVID-19 hotspots, and what they're calling now microclusters or spikelets. The red zone is actually the cluster itself, where there's a high number or a spike in cases. The orange zone is a warning zone, so it's usually adjacent to the red zone, and then the yellow zone is precautionary, and again, it goes out from the red zone or near the red zone. It's not, they're not designated by school districts, but by communities, and so it's only cross over to a different school district and encompass, you know, different communities. There are no, this, well, you may be aware that Lawrence, or parts of the Five Towns area was designated as an orange and a yellow zone, parts of Queens that borders on the Five Towns, and the Lawrence School District were designated as a red zone, and so the Lawrence School District closed for two weeks because of that. So in these areas, in both the red and the orange zones, schools are mandated to be closed, so that is one of the reasons that the Lawrence School District closed, and instead of closing just those schools in that area, they closed the entire district and went on remote learning. So when we say closed, it doesn't mean it's closed in normal language, but it's, you transition to remote. Those districts that are in the yellow zones, the Department of Health has determined that schools that are open in the yellow zones, and again, it's up to the school district whether we want to transition to remote or not, but of course, we want to do everything we can to keep our doors open and keep our kids in school. But the Department of Health has determined that if we are designated as a yellow zone, and we are not, just want to be clear, we're not, the governor announced the zones today, and so Lawrence is moving away from those zones, and no new zones in Nassau County were identified, but this will happen every two weeks. So today was, it was two weeks ago, and then today, and then two weeks from now, they're going to continue to monitor the virus transmission level and look for these spikelets or these microclusters. And so if we are in the yellow zone, we are going to be required to test 20% of in-person students, teachers, and staff at least once a week, and that became effective last Friday, for as long as the school remains designated as a yellow zone. So the guidance advises that schools that would be in the yellow zone, we should work closely with the Department of Health and any healthcare partners to establish partnerships and make arrangements for deployment of the tests in the school setting to facilitate the required testing of students, teachers, and staff attending in person. So, you know, since Lawrence was completely closed, they did not do any testing, they were not required to because they closed their doors. We had a meeting this morning with my superintendent's group in Nassau County, and the Commissioner of Health was present, as well as Dr. Buckman, who I mentioned previously, and there was a lot of confusion about what does that mean, will schools now become testing sites? And that does raise a lot of concerns. So I did put in the call to Senator Kaminsky's office to try and get some clarification on this, and I will be calling the county tomorrow as well, because it seems that there's a little confusion about whether or not we have to contract with a healthcare provider in order to provide the, in order to conduct the tests. The materials will be provided by the Department of Health free of charge, but we would need someone to actually conduct the tests. We would need to randomize our students and faculty and send out letters to those people who were picked at random to be tested, and then require that those people get tested. So this is a big, this is a big deal, and we hope that we are not in this place. We hope that the numbers stay the way they are, because it represents a huge step for a school district to randomly select members of our school community to be tested and require that, and enforce that, and then monitor that. We do not want our nurses to do the testing, we do not want to be a testing site. So what happened in Lawrence that I learned today from Senator Kaminsky's office is that the county did open up test sites that people who wanted to get tested could go to free of charge, and we believe that if our district were to be identified, that would be something where we would work with the county, and they may open up a testing site here that everyone could use. And then we would have to monitor those results and report them, and hopefully the county testing site would report them to the Department of Health. I'm not sure if you're aware, but the New York State Education Department now has a dashboard where all COVID cases have to be reported daily in every single school district, including our own, and our nurses do this on a daily basis, and as I said, we've only had the one case that was reported. And so we will keep our fingers crossed that we are not in this situation, but you will hear from us, of course, if we are. As you're aware, the transmission level in our area continues to be low, and we're really, really pleased about that. New York State, who was listed in the governor's press conference today, we are the 49th out of the 51st state or territory in our country with the third to lowest positivity rating or transmission level. That's pretty amazing, considering that New York was one of the highest, you know, was one of the hotspots in the country, and now we're at the bottom of the list. So let's keep our fingers crossed, and not just keep our fingers crossed, but continue to wear masks, because clearly that's working, it's working in our community, people are following the rules, wearing masks, and we keep hearing on the news that that is probably the best thing that we all can do. I think it was the head of the CDC that said that he thinks it's even more effective than getting vaccinations. So I'm not a scientist, but I think that's pretty strong proof that this is important and it is working, and I really congratulate all of you, parents and community members, our children are terrific. We've not had any mask problem in our schools that I'm aware of, kids wear their masks all day long, and they're doing great with it, probably better than the, it's hard, my glasses fogging up. So we will keep you posted if anything changes, there is a website on the, not the State Education Department, but New York State website, governor's website, where you can put in an address, and it'll tell you if you're in a zone, very easy, and I've been monitoring it pretty much every day, so we're in good shape right now. Living with the Bay, you've been hearing a lot about that for probably the last five years, and finally, we're thrilled to report that the project is moving forward, we have a tentative start date of November 1st for the bulkhead construction. As you were aware, when we went out for a bond, we did include the bulkhead in the bond, because at that time, you weren't sure if the Living with the Bay project would actually come to fruition, but it is, and they will be onsite on Friday with the contractor, they put it out to bid, they have a contractor now who's going to be responsible for the construction, and they will be here Friday to do the site. And they will be here Friday to do the site visit. And then we will be meeting with them for logistics dealing. So that construction will start on the bulkhead November 1st. There will be a construction trailer. There'll be about 10 workers who will be on site. And they expect to be there through the next several months working on that. So everything will be finished off. And, you know, if you go back there, you know, you know that's why, that's what's happening. They will also, they have also given us a full-service generator, and they will be doing construction on a parking lot, but that will probably in the spring and the summer. And next month's Board of Education meeting in November, the Living with the Bay team from the governor's office of storm recovery, Perry will be here, and they will present the details of these three projects with schematics and, you know, show you renderings of what it's going to look like and describe the timeline. So we're, we're just so happy this is finally happening after so, so long we've been promised this work. This also, if this project stays on schedule, it also allows us to begin the bond work for the construction of our new athletic field, as Mr. Barth calls it, our stadium complex. So we're very, very excited. There's been a lot of work already done in designing that. And maybe at the next board meeting, we can do some presentations and some of the renderings of what we have as well so that people can get a look at the proposed field, a look at the, I'll tell you a bit more later on in my report, a look at some of the other projects later on. So we're, we're very excited. In the area of achievement, extra help has begun in all three schools. So please consult the building schedule or your child's teacher for, I'm sorry, the building websites, or your child's teacher for the schedule. Center and Rain teachers have received training to support the implementation of our new reading program, Lunders. We followed up in grade-level meetings to discuss what we call the grows and the lows of the implementation so far, but it's going very well. The district's proud to congratulate junior, senior high school students who earned the distinction of Advanced Placement Scholar. These students were recognized for their successful performance on the 2020 AP exams. There were 16 students earning the distinction of AP Scholar, four earning the distinction of AP Scholar with honors, and four students earned the distinction of AP Scholar with distinction. And we will be honoring these students at the December Board of Ed meeting, when hopefully some of them come home from college COVID-3. Congratulations to seniors Sophia Bertolati and Danielle Peavy, junior Gianna Menkusi, for having their artwork accepted into the Huntington Arts Council Jury exhibit Nightmare on Main Street. Their artwork will be on display from October 16th to November 5th in Huntington. So congratulations to those students. Additionally, we had four students selected this year for NISMA Hall State in the Coral Division, and that is Gabriela Bacari, Sophia Bertolati, Grace McNally, congratulations McNally family, and Emma Polikoff. And unfortunately, these students will not be able to travel up to upstate this year because of COVID, but they will participate in activities and hopefully some kind of a concert we're holding. But we're honored and we're thrilled to have, this is the first time we've had four students selected to represent us. And kudos goes to Mrs. Shawna Silva for her expertise and guidance that we have so many students that were selected. In the area of opportunity, Center and Rain celebrated Unity Day on Wednesday with all students wearing orange. We did that as well here at the high school, and I forgot my orange. See, I have my mask. Students are completed an online pledge, committing to be inclusive of others. Kindergarten students in both schools started a new reading prevention program called Caring Kids, which uses puppets to teach students how to be a good friend. Students and staff have access to the virtual East Rockaway social, social work on down and wellness rooms, which can be accessed online through Instagram on the ER Wellness and Support group in classroom. I suggest you take a look at that if you have a moment. Students in, are these, are these the sites that are available on the website as well, Mr. Peely? Or just they're only open to students and staff?
No, they're not, they're closed.
They're great. You should please take a look at the other moment. Social studies and English classes participate in weekly anti-bullying lessons in coordination with October's National Bullying Prevention Month. Anti-bullying messages have been featured all month. On the learning announcements, over 200 East Rockaway students have signed a virtual pledge to create a world without bullying, kindness, acceptance, and guilt. This month, every senior will meet with their guidance counselor to ensure that their college essay is appropriate for the college application process. This started on October 5th, the correspondent senior college planning night, and is coordinated through students' English classes. October 14th was PSAT Day at the high school. 82 students in grade 10 and 85 students in grade 11 took the exam. They'll come to parents. This included 27 full remote students. Counselors visited classrooms on October 8th to educate students about the PSAT format, strategies, and preparation tips. And teachers in English and math classes took time to review relevant content and skills. On October 15th, school counselors presented at the PTA meeting to eighth and ninth grade families on graduation requirements and student transcripts as a beginning of the post-secondary planning process. We had a great group turnout. There were 80, over 80 parents? 50? Okay, I'm sorry, somebody had said 80. It was, it was a great presentation. I was able to attend part of it. All students in grade 7 through 12 will have the opportunity to participate in fall sports intramurals. Over 200 students have registered. As you know, athletics have been postponed until January, but we were able to begin an intramural program to allow kids an opportunity to train and work out and connect with their coaches. And we're thrilled that we've been able to accommodate so many students. So thank you to Mr. Barth and the coaching staff for making that available in a safe way in this new environment. Additionally, several of our clubs are already, have begun to meet, and they will begin to meet, or will begin to meet in the coming days. And these include DECA, Heat Club, Lock Trial, the Gulls, and to the council. The Art Club is going to focus on school education this year. And at the elementary schools, newscasters will begin. And our principals are looking at the elementary school into beginning the other clubs shortly as well. In innovation, Center and Rain teachers receive technology training to support the delivery of instruction for hybrid, remote, and in-person learning. Rain teachers receive training in Google Classroom because this is new to grades came through two this year. And special area teachers and specialists receive training in Bitmoji Classroom. And fourth and sixth grade teachers use smart notebook to create teaching tools to support reading instruction. The first meeting to plan the new classrooms as part of the bond took place on September 23rd. Teachers from the science, art, and the elderly consumer science departments, along with administrators, met with our architect, John Brillo, to begin the discussion for these new state-of-the-art classrooms. Subcommittee meetings subsequently took place to discuss plans for each of these instructional spaces. We have also worked with the design, as I said, at the athletic complex. And Mr. Barth and our coaches are providing input to the architect with regard to all the different design features of the track. So in the future, we'll update you and share these renderings and designs with you. We're really, really excited. This will be wonderful new addition for our students at the high school. The morning announcements are back. These Rockaway High School students, the crew has been assembled, and they helped produce the four- to five-minute presentation each morning to share important information, and all work is done remotely. So I'd like to thank Mr. Shaffer, because this is a teacher advisor club, and we just couldn't find anyone to step up this year because of the future, the work, and so on. Mr. Shaffer has been serving in that role since the beginning of the year and doing his stellar job. So thank you, Mr. Shaffer. In connection, Rain students will participate in the annual PTA-sponsored pumpkin patch on Thursday and Friday, where each student will see the pumpkin decorated. And they will participate in the Night of the Jack-o'-lantern. Center Avenue students engaged with teachers to decorate literary pumpkins. This was such a great idea. And virtually vote on which literary pumpkin reflects the character the best. And I can't wait to see those. They sound terrific. And also, Center Avenue came through. Three students will receive the pumpkins sponsored by the PTA. So thank you to our PTAs for always supporting our students in our schools. Back to school night took place in September. The event was virtual, began with a live stream session during which the school administration introduced themselves and presented general procedures and information. And then families followed their child's schedule. And then will each teacher be able, when the teachers share the course expectations and curriculum. This is something, it seems, that people really enjoy. And again, one of the silver linings of the pandemic is to be able to allow parents, who can't necessarily get into the building, to participate in meetings. And we hope to be able to offer, continue to offer these things when things do get back to you. And yeah, my very long report to end.
All the reports are a reflection of all the work that's being done. Thank you for that. Communication Subcommittee. We had our first meeting on October 19th this past week, and we renewed our mission statement. And that is, this committee is charged with engaging in productive dialogue regarding communication methods and messaging strategies for East Rockaway school districts. The goal is to create a positive discussion that will potentially drive future district communications decisions. We opened up this year in our first meeting with the topic of equity and inclusivity in education. I attended the NISBA Leadership Development webinar and was motivated to bring this charge to the board and through it be a great opportunity to hear from our community members of this committee. We explored the following questions. What does equity in education mean? What does inclusivity in education mean? What is the role of the school board to foster equity and inclusivity in the school community? The outcomes from the meeting was, we came up with what we call, well, the definitions. You know, the definitions is, go on and on. But in, you know, to make it clear to the committee, equity was to reduce the predictability, who achieves and who fails by cultivating the unique gifts and talents of all students. Simply put, every student is a prize, and every student needs to be a way equitable to the next person, next to them, no matter what disabilities, no matter what academic achievement level they're at. But we bring equity and making sure that we have equity for all. And the next one was inclusivity, the practice of policy in providing equal access to opportunities and resources for people who might otherwise be excluded or marginalized, such as those having physical or mental disabilities or belonging to other minority groups. The committee is aware that the Board of Education needs to be vigilant in policymaking that both equity and inclusivity must be examined and used as a measure of the strength of that policymaking for the East Rockaway schools. One of the many strengths of the district is the ability to deliver educational leads while meeting the social, emotional needs of all students at the forefront of education. It is looking forward, I, the committee is looking forward to future staff development in the area, also the Board of Education policymaking that reflects equity and inclusivity for our students and staff. Mr. McAllie, you also had a meeting. Did I, did I add anything? It was, it was really, you know, for the first meeting of the year, it was terrific. Mr. Ruiz, who there were also, any comments?
No, I, I think it's a really, really important topic. And I salute Mr. Welfers for bringing, for attending the webinar and then for bringing the topic to the Communications Committee. And I do hope that tomorrow, Policy Subcommittee meets, we can start to take a look at that 18-page policy because it's a very, very important topic. And the board does play an important role, as does the administration, asking every single employee in the school district to be committed to, you know, equity and inclusivity of all of our students so that they can all have increased opportunities, not just opportunities, but outcomes for everyone. So I'm excited for this work.
Again, item number 12, Good Welfare. Congratulations to Lou Tessisriero and his wife Caitlin O'Daddy, who married on August 15th, 2020. That's a great day. It's the same day of my marriage. Congratulations to Heather Figliosi and her family on the arrival of her daughter Zoe Lee on September 25th, 2020. Both some best wishes to TJ Terranova's son Cole, as recovers from his accident. And the condolences to Deanna McNally and family on the passing of her brother, Michael Bronbeck. At this time, I'd ask Mr. Ross, if there are any public comments from the home audience?
The, Mr. McNally has to check the.
Thank you very much. As you know, we monitor the Board of Education site. You can, at home, always put a quote on there, and we respond to that in the course of the meeting. Item number 14, Board Member Comments. Zoe, you want to start?
I would like to begin by thanking Superintendent Ruiz, Dr. McArthur, and my Mabony School, and the PTA for the board recognition this evening. Is not serving in this position and seeing those smiling, engaged faces involved in that beautiful collaborative presentation today in Portland. Congratulations to Ms. Droni and Mr. McNally on receiving tenure this evening. Keep working hard, honing your craft, challenging the students, and enlightening young minds in this district. I would like to take a moment to acknowledge all of the teachers for learning how to teach in this hybrid environment, menning, going outside of their comfort zones, taking risks, and figuring out what works best for their students. I would also like to acknowledge the students who have been involved and engaged in working hard, whether live in class or virtual. This is certainly not easy on anyone. It is the goal of this board to work with central administration to monitor how things progress. And it is our hope to eventually face students safely and return to the level. Thank you.
Right down to the water.
Well, first, I would like to thank Dr. McArthur and all of your students. That video was awesome. And those of you who don't know Dr. McArthur, any situation could get so crazy. And with everything we're going through, but Dr. McArthur will always stay so calm, no matter what. No matter, it's just like, we've spoken about it as a board, just how calm he always remains. It's, it's really awesome to see. And all of the administrators, I'd like to thank all of you. We got, it was board appreciation, thanks to all of you and all of the teachers. Mrs. Byer, please tell all of the teachers, because it's really all of you. You guys are in the trenches every day. We come and we come to meetings a few times a month, and we have to make some tough decisions. But you guys are with our children every single day. And we really appreciate you so much, everything that all of you did. And, you know, we're here because we have a stake in it, our children. But we can't thank all of you enough, especially through all of this, what you do for our children. And it really should be all of you receiving all of our efforts. So thank you very much.
I would also like to thank Dr. McArthur and Mulberry Avenue for the wonderful presentation you gave, and all the administrators. Thank you. Like Pete said, you guys are the real heroes. We're just, you know, volunteering our time to help, but you guys are the real ones. And I, being board recognition, I would also like to recognize my fellow board members and thank them. The past few months have been very hectic. We hit the ground running and haven't looked back. I'm very proud to be a part of this team, and I'm looking forward to the great things we're going to do and accomplish for our children in the future. Thank you.
Actually, second to everything Joe Curtis just said. Just an outstanding job by all, a big thank you to Dr. McArthur and all the Mabony students, and the amazing presentation that you guys put together. And everyone that was involved in this, it is greatly appreciated that you've represented our time, our value, and how much this district and students and everyone means to us. What do you think of the quote, "Integrity is doing the right thing even when no one is watching"? That's by C.S. Lewis. I think it makes a lot of sense for this evening. So thank you all very much, and I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. The best part about going on last, you know, where Pete, everybody else said, you know, said you're really on your thoughts. And one that I wanted particularly to pick out tonight, too, were the PTAs from each of the buildings that always present each year gifts to the board. And thank them for their time and efforts that they always do behind the scenes of each school that they represent. So thank you for that. Also, Mrs. Ruiz, in her work. Also, Mrs. Ruiz, in her words to the board about the board and the volunteerism that they do do, it really means a lot, because when you, and this is a typical, right? This comes from school boards itself, I just wanted to, you know, most board members spend six hours or more a week on board activities, and I think in the month of September, we must have spent over 100 hours. You know, it was norm, it was norm for everybody. Everybody was put in the extra, including us, and we loved every bit of it. You know, it becomes an extended family when you work as a board and you work for the students of the district. So it's a great honor tonight to be appreciated by the community. Thank you all for everything that you've said. The next part is, I wanted to thank Mr. Barth for the initiative of forging forward and bringing to the board, of running an after-school program first, you know, and as we keep opening the doors each and every day, we're adding the programs back, you know, in a safety way. And it was, I went out last week to feel just to watch, and it just brings your heart to warmth when you see kids doing what they do best, which is running around, smiles on their faces, and having fun, even though I saw it in their eyes, and I'm not kidding them, I'm smiling, you know, I'm saying, I'm getting pretty good at that, by the way, seeing who's swinging light on the side. But thank you for that. And let's see, that brings everything together here, so we need adjournment, and the motion to adjourn, it is now, looks like eight forty, eight thirty-six. Eight thirty-six, thank you very much. At eight thirty-six, we'd like to make the motion to adjourn. So move by Mrs. McNally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gilchrist, all in favor?
All in.
So move. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming out. Have a safe trip home.